Come out of our guests at the Watchtall Parish School Board meeting, come any time that your schedule will allow. Ms. Mekus, roll call, please.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy? Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley?
Here.
A stand, please, for the please to be done by board member Tommy Como.
Here. Salute, pledge. Pledge and solemnly salute the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emnotation to be done by board member, I'm sorry, Mr. Bobby Jones.
Father, we just say, Father, we just, oh, we just ask you to be in the room today, Father, we ask for wisdom and guidance, Father, for this meeting, just, Father, we just pray that you will watch over this meeting, Father, and just provide these members with the wisdom and guidance that you can provide. Father, again, we just want to pray for our school system, Father, and our leadership, our culture, and all the employees of the school board, and we'll, Father, just pray, just ask you to just watch over us and just keep us going. Father, we just want to pray for the Lord, Father, for the turmoil that's here. Father, we know that you're in control, Father, we just have to keep looking up to you. Because, Father, I know that you're playing it perfect, whatever happens, Father, we just need you. Father, we want to pray for our church, Father, and allow us to come and have meetings like this, Father, we pray after every day. Father, again, we just want to lift up our school, our school board, Father, and continue to watch over us and protect us, Father. Father, we just want to thank you for the things you've done for us, all the blessings, and we ask you, saying in the name of your thank you, and thank you, Father.
What's that hell, man? Well, we need approval of the minutes, February the eighth, twenty twenty-two, need a motion and a second.
I so moved that we approved minutes.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Looking down the agenda, I need approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Mr. Manley, do we have any cards filled out that was like to speak?
We have one, Mr. Spencer Young, wanted to talk on item number six. Is Mr. Young here?
I'm right here.
Okay, what, what item did you want to speak on?
Actually, it was associated with the approval of the minutes from last month's meeting.
Okay.
Can I come in?
I guess it's time to go ahead.
Yes, come on, Peter. This is Mr. Spencer Young. Mr. Young, you have three minutes.
All right, well, I'm Spencer Young, and last month at the meeting, Tiffany Hatten approached and asked to have a bond notice addressed at this meeting. Is that something y'all recall? No? Okay, well, a girl has prepared a statement for you. She's running late, she won't be here until, you know, probably fifteen or twenty minutes. I asked to step in for her, but I don't have her information to present to you. Her name is Caitlin Ross. Can she speak when she comes in? She's just been held up in traffic or something.
And what topic did she want to address? Was it the?
It's that bond.
Finance, finance committee?
Yes, yes, that Tiffany hadn't brought up last month.
Caitlin Ross?
Her name is Caitlin Ross.
If you will, when she comes in, Aileen, have her fill out a card and bring it to me, and that will be on item number three, on the finance committee report, if she wants to speak then.
Where's that at? I'm sorry.
On item number three, under business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, item number three, on the finance committee report.
Good, hey, thanks for hearing me on this. Felt bad because she's apparently trying her best to get here. All right? Appreciate it.
Mr. Manley, is that all you have?
When Ms. Ross gets here, she's going to fill one out to address the board on the bond issue if you guys are concerned about under number three, finance committee report, if she's here at that time.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We, we will be have some, having some retirements over the next month or so, and so I'll be asking you for permission to open and advertise for some positions that we have. For today, would like to ask you permission to open and advertise our director of middle school position.
We have a motion and a second to approve the director of middle school position.
Some move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
We will now to item number one, special recognitions, Ms. Aileen Smee.
Dr. Tucker, if you would join me on the floor, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We have some great recognitions today. We're going to start off with some students who are being recognized today because they recently competed in the Monroe Regional National History Day competition. National History Day, just to tell you about it, is a nonprofit organization that creates opportunities for teachers and students to engage in historical research. So students in Millland High School learn history by selecting topics of interest and launching into year-long research projects on their topic. We are proud to announce that these three students placed first in their categories in regional competition, and they'll be going forward to compete in the Louisiana State National History Day competition and have opportunity to advance to nationals in Maryland in the summer. So we're going to start with Hannah Buckley. Hannah is from, Hannah's from Watchtall Parish High School, and her category was documentary.
What was it?
Documentary. Uh, she's welcome to come right over on this side. And our next winner is Jacob Green. Jacob is from Watchtall Parish High School, and his category was exhibit. Their teacher is with us, too, while we're taking pictures, and that's Erin Taylor, and we recognized her last year for being a History Day Teacher of the Year. Finally, we have Ella Mayfield. Ella is from West Watchtall High School. And Ella placed first in the paper category. These are three, and we will give them another round of applause. We wish y'all the best in your next leg of competition.
Yes.
Okay, so our next three students we're going to honor are three district student of the year finalists. We met them at the luncheon in January. After being recognized as their school honoree, they competed locally for district honors. That included writing an essay and interviewing with a panel, as well as composing a portfolio to highlight their many achievements. For regional competition, they once again had to write an essay and interview, and we are excited to have three regional winners for Watchtall Parish. All three of our students will advance to state competition. Dr. Tucker will tell you that is unprecedented.
First time in the history of Watchtall Parish, too, that we have had three state finalists, three regional winners, so, uh, just give you an example.
We will start with Ellie Kim, and Ellie is from Corley Elementary. At middle school level, we have Eliana Grace Shepherd, and she is from East Watchtall Middle. And last but not least, our high school representative is Zach Johnson from West Monroe So these three will move on to state competition where they'll write another essay and interview virtually for state titles, and we wish you all the best in that. Okay, let's talk about our amazing faculty. We're happy today to recognize three teachers who are less than one-year teachers, so they're brand new to education and brand new to our district. The Louisiana Department of Education has implemented a new Teacher of the Year to qualify. They recognize outstanding contributions of a first-year teacher with less than one year, and they are inspiring, compelling, and professional. They have the ability to connect and represent new teachers across the state, and we have three of those with us today who are moving on to competition to further go toward Louisiana New Teacher of the Year. So we will start with Ms. Allison Coburn, who is with Sterling Town Elementary. Very exciting, this is a brand-new award, so we're excited for that. At our middle school level, we have Mark Yates from Good Hope Middle. And our high school honoree is Olivia Myers from West Watchtall High School. So we are definitely hiring some great people when we have first-year Teachers of the Year. Dr. Tucker, you're doing an excellent job keeping that organized. Okay, our next awards are for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. It's a very long title, shortened, it's called PNTs. These are the highest honors that are given by the United States Government specifically for K through twelve science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and computer science teachers. The awards were established in Congress in nineteen eighty-three, and the president can recognize up to a hundred and eight teachers a year. So our honorees are part of that hundred and eight that can be recognized each year. Awards are given to teachers from each of the fifty states, the District of Columbia, and the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico. So this award recognizes teachers who have both deep content knowledge on the subjects they teach, as well as the ability to motivate and enable their students to be successful in those areas. So awardees reflect the expertise and dedication of the nation's teaching corps, and they demonstrate the positive impact of teachers on student achievement. So for the PNTs awards, teachers are selected at the state and jurisdiction level for state finalists, which brings us to our first honoree, who is our twenty-twenty-one Louisiana math finalist, Laney Hodge from Watchtall Parish. Laney will continue to national competition, and we definitely wish her the best. Our next honoree is no stranger to this room. In fact, one year ago, we recognized him as the twenty-twenty Louisiana science finalist. Well, now, he is the twenty-twenty National Presidential Award of Excellence honoree in science. Please welcome Robbie Evans. Robbie is at Starlington Middle School. He will receive a certificate signed by the president. He'll get a ten thousand dollar award from National Science Foundation, and he attends an award ceremony with the White House. So in addition to that, awardees at his caliber join a cohort of award-winning teachers providing opportunities to impact teaching on a national scale. We're very proud of Robbie. Our three new Teachers of the Year, we also have a bag of goodies for you, so we're branding you, we're branding you with Watchtall Parish, because we claim you. For my last recognitions, I'd like to invite Jason Donovan. He's the president of Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association, to the podium.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Jason Donovan. I serve as the president of the Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association. March is National Athletic Training Month, and I'm delighted to recognize the athletic trainers currently employed by the Watchtall Parish School Board. Let me take a ti, let me take some time to familiarize the board and the others in the room with the educational standards and purpose of an athletic trainer. An AT is a highly qualified, multi-skilled healthcare professional who renders services or treatment under the direction or collaboration with a physician in accordance with their education, training, and state statutes, rules, and regulations. Eighty percent, or eighty-seven percent of our profession obtain a master's degree and governed by the Board of Certification. In Louisiana, we practice under the supervision of the LS BME, and, which ironically is governed by our own Lester Wayne Johnson here in Monroe, Louisiana, as Lester Wayne serves as the president of the LS BME. An AT is usually the first person of contact when an athlete endures an injury and involved in the prevention, the assessment, treatment, and rehabilitation of that athletic injury. At this time, I would like to recognize several individuals that currently serve Watchtall Parish School Board and the role of the athletic trainer. First one is Sheena Galloway. Sheena works at Richwood High School. That makes you look so much older, I'm not trying to. I mean, Mr. Manley looks lovely. The next individual is Anna Wigley. Phil Shaw, Watchtall High School. I would also like to point out that Phil Shaw was our last year, last year LATA High School Board Reynolds Athletic Trainer of the Year. So congratulations to Phil. And then Kirk was the very first winner of the Board Reynolds Award as the High School Athletic Trainer of the Year. I won't tell you what year because he's insecure about his name. Perhaps the thirty-nineth please, as our friend Dan's been over at West Watchtall. Personally, let me tell you, thank you to the board for recognizing the importance of athletic trainers and employing athletic trainers and taking care of not only the student athletes, but also the coaches and the other individuals that the school employs, so when something goes wrong, you have a medical personnel to take care of them. So thank you very much of the board for recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Hicks, that concludes my recognitions, and I'm going to ask my honorees to meet me out in the lobby so we can take some group pictures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, congratulations. See, Clint?
We got a crew that been leading. Yeah, they are. Yes, they are. Moving down to item number two, to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution recognizing the final form of execution of the bond purchase agreement in connection with the assurance of a sale of General Obligation School Bonds Series twenty-twenty-two on the East Watchtall Parish School District of the Parish of Watchtall, State of Louisiana, providing for other matters and connect therewith. Mr. Grant Sluter and Mr. Nandi Thompson?
Mr. Hicks, they're actually on their way in here. They, there was no space a few minutes ago, so they are walking from the conference room.
So you want to speak for them?
If we give them about thirty seconds.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll move on down to item number three. Oh, here they come, I'm sorry, here they come. Gentlemen, I just read that, y'all up.
Oh, this will be easy. This is a confirming resolution for the twenty million two hundred and five thousand that has been priced. Charlie Sides, the underwriter, is here, right here, did a great job on pricing, and Nandi's going to indicate to you the results of that, but you did very, very well, and of course, the double A minus, the high bond rating helps incredibly. And also, you were able to price and do this, sell this before we had a few interest rate increases recently, so nice results. The resolution after Nandi summarizes the terms, the resolution you have today is to confirm the award of the bonds that the superintendent did pursuant to your authorization. We'll close the transaction next Thursday, and the money will be in the bank, available for projects.
See, and there's nothing to talk about, once he tells you when you're going to get the money, nobody listens to anything I have to say. But that being the case, though, we sold the bonds, as he said, twenty million two hundred and five thousand. Your interest rate or all-in cost was two point seven nine percent. And as Grant said, want to turn it over to Charlie, just so he can introduce himself as Stiefel, they were the underwriters on the transaction.
Thank you. I appreciated the opportunity to represent you guys in the market again. It's been our pleasure over the past eight years to represent you guys six or seven times in the market, and as, as we've experienced in the past, excellent results. Your diligent planning and your prudent management pays off with your double A rating, and you're very marketable out in the capital markets, and that's what's driving your low interest rates, your two point seven nine percent on this one, and you hit the market at a good time. Rates are beginning to rise across the board and all of the capital markets, and so you did hit it at the right time. So congratulations, and once again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you guys.
Thank you.
There any questions? We'll be happy to answer them. If not, resolution is.
Okay. Okay, we need a roll call vote, Ms. Mekus.
Motion and a second.
Motion and a second, I'm sorry. Got a motion and a second?
I move we approve the resolution for the bond sale agreement as presented.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Como?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
And Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There was no request, the only request for public comments we have was Mr. Young, and of course, we're still waiting on Ms. Ross to attend, so that was the only comment we have for the day, but I will note that no public comments on this particular issue.
Yeah, okay.
Again, we want to thank you, we appreciate it, appreciate Ms. Mekus, working with the rating agency and the superintendent. It's a collective effort, and again, your excellent financial position, ample reserves, paid dividends, they paid dividends. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We were down to item number three, finance committee report. Mr. Todd Goss?
Thank you, Mr. Hicks, board. Just very quickly, our finance committee met on Wednesday, February the sixteenth. You can see that in your packet, the agenda and approved minutes from the November seventeenth meeting are included in that packet. We actually did not take any votes, we had a lot of discussion this meeting on several topics that we will continue at our next meeting on May seventeenth, and you can see the wide range of discussion we had there after receiving the finance report from Ms. Mekus, that she will share with you an updated version of that here in just a few minutes. But issues with school cash, online payments, extra hours for our parish who've been doing such a hard job and a great job in helping us out this year during the pandemic. We discussed certain employees who may work part of the day stepping in to help sub for us where we have shortages. One of our big topics was discussing possibly moving to a pay structure where we're paying our substitutes in the district at all levels twice a month instead of once a month, and then Ms. Carrero is currently involved in doing a study on the salaries for the employees in the child nutrition program. So all of those are ongoing topics, we will bring those back up at the May seventeenth meeting of the finance committee meeting and continue the discussion there, but we did not take any votes. So that's my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve this report, finance committee?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, again, I appreciate the discussion that was taken relative to several of these items that are on here, especially employees being eligible, I'm sorry, the paraprofessionals who sub for the teachers. Do you think that at your next meeting, there will be some action taken?
We're going to take it up. We're trying to make sure the legality of that, paying extra money when they're still on the clock and that type of thing, Reverend McCoy. We can do anything to help them, that's our goal, as long as we're within the law. That's the discussion, try to figure out a way to get that done.
Any more discussion from the board?
What is the benefits, or what's the reasoning for not being able to pay them twice a month?
Our structure, and Regina, you jump in there anytime you want to, we've always paid once a month. It's just going to be a change in her department in payroll and my department in leave, getting that to mesh together. We have experienced an issue where we bring subs in to work at all levels, and by the time we reach payday, they may find another job, another opportunity somewhere else that's going to pay them sooner, and they jump at it. So we're just doing it trying to help and retain our employees in those areas. We think it's going to be beneficial, we think we can get it done, that's our goal.
Right, it's, it's just our, our practices and our procedures from the ground up, from the school all the way through are set up for once a month, so we're just. So we're just having to look at that and to first see what changes does that mean for my department, for Mr. Geis's department, for a school who turns in leave, whether it be cafeteria, custodial. So we're just taking a good look at it first. We think it will be doable, but we want to go at it from to first assess what challenges we're going to have and what changes we need to make.
Good. Well, I think, Regina, what she said, we do think it's doable. We want to get everything and make sure we cover our bases and have it in place when we start school next year.
Any more discussion from the board? Item in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Moving down to item number four, approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. Mr. Todd Geis?
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Board, back at that time of year again, where we start looking ahead to next year as far as the calendar. Of course, we're held hostage a lot by the state and when testing is, and that's when we have to wait. We have to wait until we finally get those testing dates provided to us by LDOE. But the Calendar Committee met on February the fifteenth. This committee is made up of directors, our testing and accountability coordinators, and then representatives from high school, middle, and elementary. This year, at the high school level, Shelby Ainsworth, the principal at West Monroe, was the high school representative. Rodney Lloyd, the principal at Riser Middle, was the middle school representative. And Katie Wheeler, the principal at Starlington Elementary, was the elementary representative. So we went through the calendar, and honestly, the calendar that we're recommending you today is almost a mirror image of this year's calendar. We went through, we surveyed our schools via our principals for the different aspects, and I'm going to go through this briefly and kind of tell you where we are. This calendar would have teachers reporting back to work for in services on August the eighth. Now, that would be following our TIP Academy, which we started next year, last year, excuse me, with our first-year teachers, first-year employees to our district, where we use Esther funds to bring them in for six days prior to the arrival of our regular staff to give them additional foundational training and professional development. That, this coming year, we plan to start that on July twenty-sixth and run that through August the third. That's not reflected on the calendar, but our regular employees report on August the eighth, with our first day of school being August the fifteenth. And you can kind of follow along as we go through their Labor Day on September the fifth. Our first of really two in-service days on September the nineteenth, and then fall break. This year, we're recommending to remain at a week. Our survey yielded that one hundred percent of our schools requested to continue doing that. So we are making that recommendation today. One slight change, November the eighth, we have a federal election this year that will occur on November the eighth. Of course, most or a lot of our schools are polling sites. It just is easier for us not to have school that day. So rather than recognizing Veterans Day on Friday, the eleventh, we're going to couple that with Election Day, and we're requesting to recognize Veterans Day and Election Day on the same thing on November the eighth. Thanksgiving week, it is traditional location. One of the big discussions continues to be, or has been, is when do we break for Christmas? Christmas is so dependent on when it falls, but our employees overwhelmingly over the last several years have liked a calendar that had more days after Christmas, and that is what we're recommending this year. In that survey to principals, eighty-one percent or thirty out of the thirty-seven schools preferred, like we did this year, like we're recommending, versus a more balanced calendar with the same number of days before and after Christmas, coming back right after New Year. So that is what we're recommending is the Christmas break there. Martin Luther King on his traditional date, President's Day, and then spring break is so dependent on testing, spring testing, that we have to get that spring testing calendar from LDOE where we set that date. So it just kind of has to fit in like a puzzle. You can see where we're, our recommendation is to have it that last week in March. One hundred percent of our schools prefer a calendar that has a split Easter break and a split spring break. So that's what this calendar is reflecting as well. Last day for seniors would be May fourth. Last day for students would be May twenty-fifth, followed by the last day for teachers on May twenty-sixth. So that is the calendar that is being recommended to the board by the Calendar Committee.
Todd, how many built-in weather-related days do we have?
We have five built in there.
Same as last year?
Same as last year. This calendar is really almost identical to this year's calendar.
We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three calendar?
I saw a move that we approved the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion from the board? Item in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Yes, sir. Moving down to item number five, Financial Report for January the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Ms. Mekus?
Good afternoon, board. We have, we are ending the period of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two with a fund balance and general fund of thirty-nine point six million. We are running revenues at sixty percent of budget for the year and expenditures at fifty percent of budget for the year. We have a balanced budget adopted for the year, which means we intend to have budgeted to end the year with the sixteen percent fund balance, sixteen percent of our expenditures for the year, and we're on track to do that with the numbers as they are now. In District One, M and O, we're ending the period of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two with twenty-four million in fund balance. The next, District One and the nineteen sixty-eight, ninety-five, and West Washington Sales Taxes, we did get a sales tax collection report in for the month of January just earlier this week. You know, we've been talking a lot since the pandemic started about these sales tax increases not staying at the level which they have been since the pandemic started. We haven't seen a drop, or we haven't seen a decrease, but we have seen a drop in the increase. So where we've been averaging twelve to fifteen percent over the last two and a half years, this, the month of January, we were at four percent, kind of average across the board for an increase from prior year. So we'll continue to watch those closely. We have budgeted very cautiously, being conservative, because we do understand that those high rates of increase in the sales tax are not usual. On a typical year, we would expect to see from a two to four percent increase in our sales tax collections, not twelve to fifteen percent. So we have been keeping an eye on that to make sure that we are watching those numbers and we are seeing them. It may be that they come back up for the month of February, but we'll just watch them very closely.
So what, but we budget based on the realistic more two or three percent increase as opposed to the superficial twelve or fourteen?
Yes, we budget based on prior year trends with considering current year actions. You know, we consider what's going on right now, but we have been very conservative in our budgeting because, you know, with that unprecedented increase, we want to be sure we're prepared upfront when it starts to fall. I would rather get to the end of the year and tell you that sales tax collections were higher than expected. They get to the end of the year and say we had to dip in our fund balance because sales tax collections didn't continue to increase as much as we expected. So we are very conservative, and when I budget revenues, I'm looking at the last three years. And in some cases, we go back as far as ten years and look at revenue trends. So just to make sure that we're on solid ground when we make those projections.
That's how we get that double A rating, huh?
I would like to think it helps.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financial report for January the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Regina, you approve? I'm sorry. You approve?
I sure ain't.
We got a motion and a second.
I saw move. We approve the financial budget as presented by Ms. Mekus. Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion from the board? Item in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.
I do have another FYI, unless Dr. Coker wants to cover this with the supplement.
You can tell him.
Okay. As you're all aware, and approved in a resolution last fall, March eighteenth, which is tomorrow, we have a fifteen hundred dollar supplement being distributed to all of our regular employees hired by the board as well as our long-term substitute employees who have been with us and have helped us cover classes, take care of kids, really could not have made it through this time without them. So this is the first time we've ever included the long-term substitutes. It has definitely been a challenge to go through those records and really make sure that we're following the intent of the board. My team has worked hard on this, and I feel like, you know, not saying that it's going to be perfect, but just FYI, if you get calls tomorrow, please encourage them to call and leave a message. If you want to call me yourself and give me a name, so we will research everyone individually as we have been doing throughout the last couple of weeks to make sure that everyone who is intended does receive this. But with it being long-term subs, as I said, we've never done this before. It has been a challenge, but we will be diligent to make sure everyone who falls within the intent of this does receive it.
Thank you, Ms. Mekus.
Mr. Hicks, we do have the comment card I received from Ms. Caitlin Ross. Ms. Caitlin Ross here?
Not here yet. Okay. All right, moving down to item number six, consideration and approval of resolution authorizing Board President Jerry Hicks to execute on behalf of the school board any and all documents necessary in connection with the sale of the Logtown School Site to the Tensaw Basin Levy Board. Mr. Noah?
Mr. Hicks, members of the board, you've got in your packet a copy of the resolution and an attached legal description for the Logtown property. You recall several months ago, Representative of the Tensaw Basin Levy District appeared before the board with a request that they be allowed to purchase the old Logtown School Site to relocate their main offices. They're having some issues with their current location with regard to space demand in this site that needs to long-term grow. And there was an agreement the board approved, a sale price to the Tensaw Basin Levy District. What's before you today is just a resolution specifically authorizing Mr. Hicks, the president of the board, to appear in connection with any and all sale documents. The closing is tentatively scheduled for next Thursday morning at eleven o'clock, and so we should be receiving money from the Tensaw Basin Levy District at that time. But that's what the resolution is for, filed by Mr. Hicks, to appear on behalf of the board to close that matter out.
All right, you have a motion and a second to approve this resolution? So move?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? Item in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving down to item number seven, Construction Renovation Projects. Mr. Schlescher?
Should have front of you a status report from TVA on the Bowley Elementary School and the West Washington High School. Give you a chance to look at that. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you. I notice that we have a representative here today, but... Also, I'd like to call your attention to some things coming up. Excuse me. On March the twenty-fourth, at two P M., we have the opening bid on the Riser Restrooms. On March the twenty-second, we have a nine o'clock pre-bid at Pinecrest for the canopy out front. March twenty-third, we have our first construction meeting at the new Starlington Middle School. That's at one thirty. One thirty on March the twenty-third, the construction meeting at Starlington, the new Starlington Middle School. And then at East Washington, now, the stadium's about eighty, eighty-five percent complete, and they're saying they'll be through with the whole project around the first of May.
I think that's, the pictures are looking good, the tall posts are up.
Even though they're closed, they're up. All the lights are up.
Any more questions for Ken?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Ross coming in? Ms. Ross, we have moved past the item that you was wanting to talk about, so we can put you on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay. Thank you. Moving down to valuation of bids.
Thank you, board members. And Dr. Coker, you've got in your packet the items that we have already placed on bids and have observed. I'll walk you through them very quickly. The first one is being copy paper. That one was awarded to Jackson Paper Company for all items but one. And Veritiv was awarded one of those items as being the lowest bidder. The second one is Chromebook cases. We did not have any responses that met the codes and the credentials of the bidding process. We're now going to be asking in just a few minutes to change that to an RFP. We feel like we'll be able to get put in there exactly what we need, the specifications and the things that Clint and his team is needing for those Chromebook cases. So no award was granted at that time. The next one is the portable tracts and tracts. Only one bidder, and that was Teacher's Pet. And that is being done with Esther funds, and we will proceed with that, with your approval. The next one was the antibacterial soap, and the lowest bidder was Guy Paper, and we will proceed with granting that award to them. The next one was the RFP for educational materials. We only had one to reply, and that was Amplify. And so we are granting it to Amplify because of the lack of responders from anyone else. The last one is hand paper towels, and we divided that one. We have Economical Genitorial that got bid, item one and two, and Guy Paper got bid, item number three. So that is the evaluations of the bids that we have completed.
Okay.
All right. Any questions you can ask Mr. Bobby? Math curriculum also. We have finished that RFP, and there was only one responder to it as well. And so we will be granting that one to its one sole bidder.
So the only item you're not going to do today is the number two item, Chromebook cases?
Yes, Chromebook cases.
So we taking one all the way through seven?
Correct.
Okay.
And we will resubmit Chromebook cases as an RFP, which is in the next segment.
Okay. Okay, board, items one, three, four, five, six, and seven, are you, we need a motion and a second? So move?
That we were accepting.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? Item in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries.
All right, the last item for us is permission to bid, and we have several things that are ongoing. We'll have three RFPs, and we will have six bids, and you have them listed there. I believe historically, y'all take these as a group, but we'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Items one through eight, have any questions on that, them items to bid?
The West Washington Agribusiness were bidding that?
Correct. It is the second one. Yes.
Any more questions?
Some Chromebooks, is that additional Chromebooks we're trying to get, or?
It's cases, Mr. Manley.
Cases.
Covers to protect them.
Yeah, so we're getting a case for every Chromebook?
Correct.
Yes, number two from the top. Right.
Pardon me? Yeah, we should order cases when we order Chromebooks.
Any more questions on one through eight? Need a motion and a second? So move?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the board? Item in favor, yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. Board, our next meeting will be... I'm sorry? No, sir. We passed that item that you was gonna speak about, and she said she understood, and she will be on the next agenda.
Here we go. Here we go.
We, we put her on the next board meeting, sir. That's all we can do. That's the... I'm, I'm sorry. The next board meeting is when we gotta do this. We can't, we can't change that.
We're gonna announce it?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be May the tenth at twelve o'clock. Uh-huh. Thank you.
Actually, April.
April tenth.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. April tenth. I'm sorry.
You're getting those out of this spring and this summer.
Yeah. April the tenth. Okay.
What time, year, boy?
At twelve o'clock. I have a motion to adjourn. Dr. Coker?
I, I'm good.
Yeah. Have a motion to adjourn?